Let's lead this to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Martin?
Here.
Trustee Chongley?
Here.
Trustee Gesenda?
Here.
Trustee Chongley?
Here.
Trustee Gary?
Motion to approve the minutes, the last board meeting, number fourteen. Motion to approve.
I'm saying...
We don't have the board, so we don't. And we can't put the special, unless any, any time soon, the minutes of the special board meeting. You were both here. You were. In motion to approve the minutes, October third, special board meeting.
Mr. Martin?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? motion carries? What kind of the other board minutes? Petitions, communications, notices, general question period, members of the community. Go ahead.
Trucks are still parking at Kempex, though.
Yep, I called Mr. Lamberton about that. His advice was, when they're there, call the state police. That's all he, you know, that's all he told me. When they're there, call the state police.
There's no action this court can take as a village to prohibit the parking?
We put up signs, we put up barriers at one point. I don't know how we're gonna stop it because they pull in, depart, and supposedly they take off in a hurry.
Put up barrier in front of the doorway that won't allow the fifty-foot, three-foot trucks to enter?
I don't know if it would be in front of the, in front of the doorway. It would actually be up the street somewhere.
The right-of-way on Elm Street is quite wide.
Sixty-six of wide, but you can't put it outside the road.
Outside the reach of a flower.
I don't know if it would ever be back there.
Like a Jersey barrier.
Yeah.
Just outside the reach of the wing of the flower. UPS trucks or trucks of length that won't block the highway could get in from behind because they can come in off of Walnut Street, which they do. But that would prevent them from parking across the roadway.
It may look better to Mr. Lamberton and whoever owns that loading dock, or bringing that loading dock, that they have unloaded the trucks at the other six bays. And I guess the reason, if you don't, is because the section is locked off. But they did, Mr. Gallo moved his loading and unloading down at that area. But that was with Mr. Lamberton. Apparently, he's either fed up with it or feels that he can't enforce that law.
So he has no control as a corporate manager, the village has no control as a corporate entity?
Well, I don't know what we would do. We can put signs up, we disregarded the signs in the last episode. I think what we have to do is get the, get the message across to the truck drivers that are loading and unloading by these legal authorities. And that was the advice that I was giving. If there was something we could do, we weren't willing to investigate to do it. I just, I just don't know what we could do as, as a judge.
I, I don't believe that they're making the delivery, we can't stop them from making the delivery. That's like a truck making the delivery on, on a truck that's, on a road that's five ton per axle, whatever, we can't stop them from going through there with a traction trailer if they're making the delivery. We can't have any two traffic. And with the fifty-three foot trucks with the thirty-foot trailers, and you were there the day. See them? I've been there, I've been watching that for thirty years. I don't, unless it was passed with the code of resolution or something to make that, that there's no truck over serve limit there. I don't think legally you can do anything about it unless you dig in a rack or something.
Even then, it would be hard to enforce it. They're gonna come in and park them in.
I mean, used to Japanese truck leave one lane open, some, now sometimes they got the bumper in the, I mean.
Let's investigate, it's our issue.
There's gotta be other municipalities that have a like problem or that have resolved it. The city of Flasberg, they, I see the, the shorter trucks, they back up, they deliver it right on Margaret Street, and their front end's out in the road. I don't, check around, but I don't know how the municipalities do it.
Seems awful. Seems awful that we used to try her that's making this action.
They used to get out, stay in the front of the truck. Some do, some don't.
That's why I said the drivers aren't real nice about what they're doing.
Now, I've got, I've got to tell them, tell them they can't park right down. What's gonna do?
You said we put signs previously, where the signs say, no blocking the roadway?
No blocking, no parking. Blocking the roadway.
Right, so...
It was a correction.
If we put those back, would be easier for the state police to enforce it?
Well, it would, I would imagine, yes, but it would seem like the state police, if they catch the driver blocking the highway, they could ticket him to deal with the death warrant. It's just a violation of, of parking in the road, not allowing enough space for emergency vehicles to be allowed.
If something comes out, it'll worry everyone.
I agree, I mean, we can get a look, is it Mr. Susie?
Correct. I called, I called Mr. Susie.
I think that's where we have to go.
I called to get a number, and they never called back. I called the Canadian office.
Well, you spoke with someone at Kempex, and I did see, I did see her out there, she said she talked with the manager at Kempex, and he was checking into it. That was about a week ago.
So what do you have for?
He, he's the one who controls, he's doing the...
He's the one who has the incentive to, to give the incentive to Mr. Lamberton, who is supposed to be the general manager there. Doesn't seem like he wants to know a lot right now about it.
The sheriff is sat right there all day.
Well, we'll look at it soon. Appreciate it. Good stuff. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you, I'm so sorry.
No, no problem.
Wait, child returned home.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of the last board meeting, number fourteen.
So, Luke?
Second. All in favor? Any changes? Any discussion? additions, deletions? All in favor? If I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Now, those are the reports from the post enforcement officer.
I picked a good week to go on vacation.
Yes, you did.
I left town, the building came down. I, I guess, if you're gonna take action on this, this project here tonight, one way or another, basically, I'm sure you all know that after the snowfall we had caused the building to partially collapse, which is a very dangerous situation, it continues to collapse. In my mind, this is an emergency situation. I, I personally think the building needs to come down. The engineers have basically backed that up in their second letter that they sent. So, I mean, I leave it up to you people to take the action here, and I'll follow up with it. The owner seems to be not capable of financially dealing with this at this time, from what I gathered. Talked with contractors.
I get the impression talking to him, that he is very dismayed by what has happened to that building. I think he had plans for it, but basically, plans go awry, so...
It's been going downhill for several years. They did do some repair work on it, then they started some interior demolition, getting it ready for some project he had in mind, but then work stopped a few years back. It's been, been sitting idle, basically, with no attention since then. And with no heat in there, and high groundwater, and rainwater, those buildings, you know, time moves on. So, I think we're at that point where, unfortunately, it's, you know, it's got some historic value, I'm sure, it's a nice old building, but...
Now, the brickwork there is very intricate.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Yeah, I mean, you don't find buildings like that anymore. But it's gone to the point that it would be cost prohibitive to, to rebuild that.
Well, we have a plan.
Other than that, that's all I have, than working on that building.
Okay. Questions for Mike? Okay, you have my report, it's, it's quite lengthy tonight. I'd like to bring the board up to date with what is going on with this building, as well as the general public. So let's start with Thanksgiving Day. On Thursday, eleven twenty-four, notice of a partial building collapse at Ninety-three Church Street was given to me by the fire department. The fire department closed the parking lot for the apartment building on the north side of the affected building, and the village erected a barrier to limit traffic close to Ninety-three Church. NICEIC was called for emergency removal of both the electric and the gas hookups. On Friday, I called earth science engineering to do an evaluation survey of the building. An inspection was completed on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, that is number four in your correspondence. Results received on Wednesday, eleven thirty of the inspection. I talked with Mr. O'Connell on Tuesday, and explained the condition of the building, and set up a meeting with him for Saturday, the third of December. Attending the meeting were two local contractors, Mr. O'Connell and myself. Discussion with Mr. O'Connell and the contractors ensued, with the contractors contacting Mr. O'Connell the next week with their price for taking the building down and removal of the debris. Mr. O'Connell felt the cost was out of his financial picture. Conversations with all parties will continue. In fact, I was in contact with Mr. O'Connell today. I know that this is a time-consuming, or is time-consuming, especially in regards to this situation, but there are procedures that we must follow in this case with Mr. O'Connell. In conversations with the village attorney, we have formulated a plan of action and resolution to be discussed under new business. I believe, as a last resort, the village will have to take the building, have the building demolished and removed, and relever the cost of the property on the property owner's taxes for 2012. Our county legislator, Harry McManus, is helping to guide us at the county level, as well as with other issues pertaining to this situation. It is imperative that this demolition be a controlled experience to protect the safety of those residents nearby. I have been in contact with Mr. and Mrs. Castine and Mr. Landry, who owns the apartment building, that all steps will be taken to protect their properties from any damage. Demolition and removal of debris will occur at Ninety-three Church Street as soon as practically possible to remove this hazardous condition, hopefully to the satisfaction of all involved. It's been a very time-consuming, that's all that's kind of taken up our time here in the office for the last couple of weeks, is this situation. And I think it will be resolved very quickly, with a little bit of patience, and a little bit of understanding, I think, if we can do that. Do you have any questions, board? Any questions on this, at this point?
In the demolition of the building, Greg, is there a basement in that building?
Yes, there is, and it's partially open.
And what will happen with the basement?
Hopefully, a lot of the bricks will fall in there.
And that will be used to fill it?
And it will all be taken out of there.
So it will just be a hole?
So it will just be a hole that will be filled in, leveled off, and flat.
As part of the demolition contract?
Yes, as part of the demolition and the removal of the debris, and building that back up. Now, some of the bricks will probably stay in there, less than the amount of dirt that we will have to, will have to be put in there. But at least it will be down. That's my biggest concern, is a controlled demolition.
Who's gonna assume liability after already insured? Contractors?
The liability...
In regards to property owners and founders?
That will go with the contractor's insurance. And at this, at this point, I was told by Mr. O'Connell that there is no insurance on this building, but he is still liable for anything that happens at that building at this time.
So there's no asbestos, why don't they plan on filling the hole?
Well, there's no asbestos in there.
Right, so just let it all go into the...
Well, there's much more brick there that, that'll fill that hole.
And so the majority of it will redeem in the hole.
So what if we get it knocked down, and the owner puts a sign on the property, help yourself to the bricks, because I've had so many people approach me, I'm wanting these bricks, vials, that place will be cleared in no time.
Once it's knocked down, once it's knocked down, the contractors are gonna cart those bricks out of there as quickly as they can.
Right, but if they're, he's looking for a cost-effective measure here, because he can't afford this demolition.
I wouldn't think that the contractor could take on that kind of liability of someone getting hurt on the worksite.
No, we're not gonna, no, we're not gonna sell those bricks.
No, I'm not selling. Just have people go, help themselves in the middle of the night until it's gone.
Maybe some deal can be made with the contractor, whoever is the contractor.
They can go to landfill again.
Maybe some deal, no, we're not gonna, I don't think they'll go to the landfill. Some of the debris will go to the landfill, the wood and stuff, the, the sheet rock, insulation, stuff like that will have to be buried in the landfill. But the bricks, one of the contractors has a DEC permit to take it, put it on his property inherently.
I might add, the DEC is very specific about what they can use as a construction debris. And it's gotta be bricks, mortar, cement, no wood, I mean, it, I've got the list, I've got a copy of it here, and it's very specific.
Well, the hangup, the hangup was whether or not there was asbestos in that building.
Exactly.
Mr. O'Connell, through Lady Bedard, got, got inspected, you hear, some clients read along, but testing was done, and there was no asbestos in the ground. Yes, very lucky, testing samples. So that's where we are at this point. There are some things under new business that we will discuss further. We need some, some resolutions to proceed under the advice of our attorney. Anything else? All right, our first, and hopefully annual tree lining ceremony was held Saturday, the ninth. The caroling was fun, the refreshments were wonderful, and a good time was had by all. There were a large number of people attending, with a surprise visit from Santa. I would like to thank the generous sponsors who helped make the event possible. Valero's, East Hardware, Dunkin' Donuts, Stewart's Ice Cream, and Ross's Point. All were very generous with their support. I would like to extend a special thank you to Jenna Lee and John Cummins for arranging this event and providing great music, which was enjoyed by all. Hopefully, hopefully this will be an annual event to be enjoyed by all of the village residents and those in the surrounding area. Uh, let's see, I'm sure that Amy will remind us of the holiday. Okay, there's not still any contest there. A reminder, there is no parking on village streets between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., from November first to April first, to allow for safe plowing and for street maintenance. And finally, no cheers. We hope that you all have a safe and happy holiday season, and be kind to our neighbors who are less fortunate than ourselves during this time of giving. Thank you. Trustee Kim Chongley?
The first thing, it's a little late, but I wanted to congratulate Jim Andres on receiving the certification that he received back in October. We weren't here for the November meeting, so congratulations to him on that. And also, I just wanted to thank Mayor Martin for all the time that was taken away from his family over the Thanksgiving weekend to deal with this emergency situation. It was a lot of time, and...
It's part of the job.
Well, I'm sure that, I know the board appreciates it.
Mr. Susie, does he have?
You know where to report this evening?
Trustee Chongley?
I was thinking of taking your time in this matter as well, so here, Kim just said that, and the rest of the office has spent a lot of time at that, and the board does appreciate it, thank you very much. I have nothing else to report this evening.
Trustee Gary?
First of all, thank you for doing the sing-along, organizing that.
It was fun, wasn't it?
It was, and the feedback that I've been getting, I got a lot of things today from people, other than being a little cold, they had a great time. I think it's the coldest night we've had yet. But it was nice, it, it really was good, just get people to come out and, and come together, and I don't foresee it being an issue continuing as a tradition, and very nice.
Those few snowflakes, or...
It was perfect, yeah, we were singing, all of a sudden, just beautiful Christmas snowflakes started coming down, it was great, it was perfect. So it was very nice. To go along with that, our decorating contest is coming up, the eighteenth through the twenty-third. Judging will take place, so make sure your lights are on and your inflatables are up. So the judges will be driving around the village at that time. Check out your homes. For those of you who missed the caroling, there is a caroling Knights of Columbus are having on the twenty-second?
Yes.
The twenty-second, so, meeting there at 7:00 p.m., am I correct? So come on out and get on the wagon and go around town. I know that there are certain homes, if they stop and sing loud, especially if they stop at my house, and I hear them might come out with baked goods. So it is worth getting on the wagon for some good time. And, and to reiterate what Greg said, you know, this is a time when we are all blessed with so many things. Keep your eye open for those who aren't, it's blessed this Christmas season, and may you and your families have a very blessed Christmas, and a good year.
Thank you, thank you all. Have to report for, for the first...
At what time in November does Murray and I part? Happens every year, we do that. We paid off the prior mortgage, and last Christmas month, I'll be doing some part.
So those two bets will be wiped away? Do we need a motion before we discuss these, or do we? Let's have a motion to, let's have a motion to pay the warrant, please.
We have, oh, wait, we have two invoices that, do we want to do that now, or do we want to discuss that now?
Let's, let's go with the invoices first, and the transfers, and then we'll discuss the other one.
Okay. So, Larry has one purchase request, the oil can, the international dump truck needs to be fixed. We've got two quotes. One from Champlain Peterbilt for $1,158.99, and one from M.A. Jerry for $2,885.61.
This is quite a rate of cuts, I'm...
Big difference in price.
We, we took and cleaned all the bottom, we were gonna replace it ourselves, but you have to drop the whole front end, the cross member stuff, it's pissed up in there. So I had the guys, you know, the guy told me, there's no way, you gotta have people getting in there to do it.
So you need a motion for this, or?
Yes.
I wanna do that.
Let's, let's do it individually, get a motion for, to repair the 2,000 international dump truck.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to replace the oil can on the 2,000 international dump truck, the Champlain Peterbilt, at $1,158.99.
Second, any other discussion on this? Rule call vote, please.
Trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Gesenda?
Aye.
Trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. We have some transfers to do.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the transfers, please.
I'm going to read to the monthly due of past work that's come, went up. They have a, work with Tom, Bill has a New York State status statement, and it's tagged on to our bill, and it went up to 11.6%.
This tax cap was 2%.
That's only for us. Need a motion to approve the transfers, cannot have any negative, negative balances in any of the accounts.
No, I'll put the transfer in the chart. What's the numbers associated with them, so I do it right?
It's all written on the paper.
So I gotta read all of these out? Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the following transfers as presented?
Any other discussion on these? You see the amounts are not large, or just to keep the, keep the accounts... Just so, on the advice of the controller, about, that we need to keep the, the accounts of, without, without any negative balance. Need a motion, any other discussion? Rule call vote, please.
Trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Gesenda?
Aye.
Trustee Chongley?
Aye.
Trustee Gary?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Yes, need a motion to approve the warrant?
Hey, I have two invoices that I have the need to add in. One is petty cash, the eighty-one ten point four, what we need to get from the store lot, and seal and testing. Yes. And the other one is...
How much was that?
Three dollars and twenty-one cents. And EJ Presto, F eighty-three ten point two, five hundred and eighty-six fifty-two, Larry needed orders from Ben in case we have an auto break. We have the two different numbers.
For a total of five eighty-nine seventy-three?
Pardon?
For a total of five eighty-nine seventy-three.
Yes, correct. So I make a motion to approve the warrant?
Well, we have something else to discuss.
Do we have one more? We have one more?
In correspondence, number four. On the twenty-ninth, on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, well, let's backtrack that a little bit. On Friday, the twenty-fifth, I called earth science engineering and left a message on their machine, being a holiday, and asked if they would come up and visit us again, we've already had. Mike, you remember, that was in September, when the first inspection was taking place. And this is after the partial collapse occurred. I asked that they come up and reinspect the building. I knew that we would need this for the legal end of fees, as it were. They came up, as you see on the bill that you have, they listed this as an emergency site visit. I called them on Friday, they showed up on Tuesday, we got the report on, on Wednesday or Thursday. Shortly thereafter, dated December first, 2011, I received a bill from earth science engineering for emergency site visit, subsequent letter report documenting the potential danger of the reference site, with a lump sum request for payment for $1,000. I felt that this was excessive. I called Mr. Ferris and talked to him about it, and was told that the amount was because of the seriousness or the expressiveness of the, of the report. Putting his engineering firm on the line in case the homeowner decided to take this case to court and to sue earth science engineering for their engineering report. We paid $500 at the last meeting for the initial report. This report is much more, I guess, much more pointedly expressing the dangerous and the hazardous condition of this building, but I still felt that this was an excessive amount, and explained that to him, and told him that I would bring this up at this board meeting for the trustees to examine, and I would like their, and I'm asking for their input on how to deal with this, on how to deal with this expense.
Was anyone there when they came up and read this re-inspection?
No. I think, I think it was done by, I know Mr. Ferris signed it, but I believe this was done by an intern. Who signed it, first year earth science engineering, Ryan Davies, I.E., intern. So...
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry.
I'm asking for the board's advice on how to proceed in this manner. I told Mr. Ferris that it would... I told Mr. Ferris that it would be very hard for me to get this bill across or by the board, and he said, whatever we determine, he will have to be happy with. So, do you have any input on this?
So the only thing we have to compare it to is its first.
It's the first report, yes.
First report was five hundred dollars, and the second one is.
This one is, is much more, you know, expressing the hazardous of this condition. His engineering, his engineering firm is, as he expressed it on the line here, as a representative of the village.
How? I'm confused with that. So we use stronger language to say, hey, which is very obvious, it's a gaping hole, and it's caved into the parking lot next door, which is kind of general to any passerby, that this is a danger to the community now. I'm not quite sure if perhaps they purchased an expensive thesaurus to use stronger verbiage to tell us we need to come down, but how you justify one thousand dollars, it, you know, they didn't come that day. There was something, if they stopped what they're doing, they came that day, they had that report to us that night, saying this needs to come down, but when you get the report seven days later, they come five days later, there's no justification in a thousand dollar bill. And to have an intern, who's not, an intern do it.
The intern, I think, did the first one, didn't he, Mike?
No, they were both there.
He was there.
And, and what is different from the first report to the second report, other than the fact stronger verbiage of the danger to our community right now?
Which would be needed if this court had, if this had to go to court. And also to protect, I believe, to protect his licenses, Bill.
I mean, there's no question in this case of the danger when you've got rubble spewing into the property to the right, and the potential of crushing the property to the left if it goes that way.
No matter what the, the outcome, the amount that is paid for this, what's going on, is this included in the cost of demolition and rolling on tax rules?
Yes.
For the owner to be responsible for?
Yes, this will all be reliving. The cost of demolition removal, all of our expenses, engineering expenses, engineering expenses.
Well, even if it's being levied, I, I have a moral issue with paying one thousand dollars, or even though we're passing it off on this guy, I think it's an extremely excessive advantage taking situation. What recourse do we have?
What would you recommend?
The only thing I would recommend is paying the same.
Paying the same amount.
So, we did for first one.
But did they take the exact same report they had done? I mean, the fact that we don't even know what they did when they went.
You'd have a copy of the previous report.
Yeah, the previous was.
Of this one, it was kind of weak.
Yeah, it was a one-page report like this.
Rather weak.
I know you said, Greg, that he said whatever he, I forget how you worded it, whatever he gets, he'll have to be happy with. I would, I would prefer to read.
Well, the way he, the way he stated it, I guess, is he would not take the notice to court over the difference.
Okay, my opinion is that we have a very good working relationship with this firm. We've dealt with them a lot. In all fairness to them, it was an emergency situation. I do think a thousand dollars is a bit excessive. I would think that, that possibly was some discussion with them, that we could maybe try to get a reduced amount for this, but basically, you're more kind of at their mercy when you have an emergency situation. If your furnace goes, you're at the emergence, you're at the mercy of the guy that's coming to fix it, so.
But they come within twenty-four hours if your furnace breaks, not five days.
Well, that could be possibly something that could be spoken to Mr. Ferris about.
So it takes off the emergency bill, billing here, wasn't done within a twenty-four hour emergency situation.
Have we ever recommended an amount?
I recommend five hundred.
Kind of losing that one.
I, I don't have a specific amount in mind, I just feel that it possibly could be negotiated with him. I do take a thousand, I don't know, somewhere between five hundred and a thousand, I, I think a thousand is excessive. You know, maybe if they had come that, that day, and done it, and gotten it back to us. But I do, I do not want to be rich with that, because we have dealt with this firm, and they have done very fairly with us in the past.
Okay.
I just think that maybe some negotiations on this could go along well.
I don't know how far you're trying to negotiate, that was my, that was my purely talking there. My recommendation is somewhere between the five hundred and a thousand, and have him accept that, rather than take us to task over this. But it's, it's whatever you, whatever you want.
Well, because the bottom line is, yes, we'll attach this to this gentleman's taxes, but he's in a financial situation and living in another country, and eventually he's going to be added to our tax rolls as county. So, I mean, you really need to be mindful of the money that's being spent, and not think that, well, the owner's going to pay for it. Reality is, it's not going to get paid for.
Yep. I agree with that. I also agree with what he's suggesting, because we do have a relationship with him, but do we need a motion just for this addressing this?
Yes. I need a motion to address this, as well as the amount, so that we can put this on the board, babe.
Wow.
Maybe we can put it off for another point if you want.
I, again, I.
Can we table it until we discuss this with him again?
Sure.
That may be the best thing to do.
And then come back in January, Greg, and, I mean, basically, if he's not willing to renegotiate this dollar amount, then I guess we're going to be.
We're going to start paying.
We're going to be starting paying that, but if it could be resolved amicably, you know, given the fact that they didn't come immediately, in, you know, which was an emergency situation, I'd just like to see it resolved.
I'll call tomorrow. Do you, so, this is tabled for January?
Yes.
Until January. Okay, I will call tomorrow and see what we can, see what we can do with this.
Thank you.
Now, need a motion to approve the warrant? There it is.
With the two, two added, two additions.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant, as presented, two additions, D eighty-one ten point four, and F eighty-three ten point two, totaling five hundred eighty dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second.
Any other discussion on the warrant? It's a big one this time. Any discussion, a roll call, both please.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Gesenda.
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Report from the superintendent, please.
I'll have a copy of my work report running, just on my work report last month, we did have two water meter breaks, and that's why I ordered more veins to replace them, because we don't have them at the door tonight, you rest a lot.
Yeah, so.
Green water meter right now, and we had a few that wasn't working, so we're repairing them as we, we go, we're having a bunch of sludge hauled out, getting the truck ready, just to down, we worked on it, needs to be inspected, but we've got to have the oil leak fixed first, so.
Do you have an appointment for that?
I don't have an appointment until this is approved.
Is it inoperable at this point?
What's that?
Is it inoperable at this point, until it's replaced?
Uh, if the wire is great, yeah, but the inspection run out on it, so, one of these guys go on the road with it, make his stuff that's on the driver.
Okay.
So, up to this point, no.
Along with Larry's report, I know that we have discussed this in the past, we have a number of folks, and Mr. Sorel and staff are reading water meters again this week, we have a number of folks who are past due on their water bills. I know the code says that we have to terminate service. I am a bit reluctant, the record is saying this, I am a bit reluctant to turn off so much water during this time of year, but I would like some board guidance on how to handle this. Do we give them more time? Do we suspend the water going to these homes with liquid bills? Or how do you want to handle this?
How, how delinquent are we speaking about?
Well, we're talking about last month's, last quarter's, because they had until the end of, end of.
October thirty-first, actually.
Okay, so we're, we're dealing, we're going into the second month here, we've sent out letters stating that they had, how many days, fifteen?
Thirty days.
Thirty days?
Well, once the letter goes out, they usually have another week and a half to two weeks before we tell them the water will be shut off.
Okay, so those letters have been sent out, and there are still?
How many are there?
How many have?
Probably about fourteen.
Fourteen if they count the counts.
Has anyone been into the office, Greg, to, to speak to the staff about it?
No, not that I know of. No one's come in to talk about it.
I'm not sure, I thought you.
Has anyone who's received a letter saying their water's going to be shut off come in?
Oh yeah, we've had quite a few come in and pay. There was a lot more than that.
It was a total of seventy-five.
Yeah, we've had a lot.
So you're down to fourteen?
Yeah. Somewhere in that range.
So of these fourteen that are left, you've not heard from them? Are they living there? Or are they?
Yeah.
Someone is in residence, that's why I've never been comfortable with this, shutting the water off.
Well, it's hard, you know.
Some are tenants.
And ninety percent of them are tenants.
And it's their responsibility, and not the landlord?
It's the landlord's responsibility.
Okay, so, and we haven't heard from landlords?
No.
Are they FCT landlords, or are they local?
Some are, some are local.
Can a letter be served on the landlords, if it is the landlord's responsibility to be paying these bills?
I don't have some legality here.
I'm not comfortable shutting off the water, if it is not part of the tenant's contract, it's too bad that their landlord is not taking care of business, but it would be a shame to have a family suffer the consequences of a landlord's inability to take care of business.
We, we, we can't really do anything as far as the tenants. We check with health department on this, and because it's a third party involved, really, really can't do much.
In, in regards to what?
Can't go in and shut the water off on a tenant's property, because let's say the tenant may have paid the landlord, and landlord didn't pay the village, so.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I, I'm.
Isn't there legality here? What does our lawyer say in this situation? I mean, because there is a requirement of landlords pay the waters.
Well, that's what I'm saying, can't.
I'm looking at the village code as a legality issue.
Right.
The village code is quite explicit in how we handle these cases, it's just, it's not that they want to go against the village code, it's just not real comfortable trying to water off.
But the village code is in contradiction with what Donna's saying about having a tenant, and she's right, you know, these guys, if they're paying their rent, they're innocent in this situation, and it becomes a legality issue.
That part is.
Towards the land owner.
Right. It becomes a building code issue also, because you have to have heat, electricity, and water, otherwise it's uninhabitable building.
Exactly.
Correct. That was, that was set through the health department, and if we shut somebody's water off, and water, and their water is of vital for them, then it puts the village as a third party in trouble.
Okay, so I go back to my original question. Can we have our lawyer send some sort of a registered letter to the landlord, landowner, stating that?
Sorry, violation?
Yeah.
Give them fifteen days to pay the bill.
What, they have another bill coming out the end of the month?
Right, I mean, we have another bill coming out in two weeks, so it, whatever's not paid will be, will add to the next bill.
But I am not comfortable shutting off people's water, especially if, if it is not their responsibility.
All four communities' accounts, I'm sorry, all four communities' accounts.
Right.
Tenants was.
No.
No?
Some of them are, are personal residents, they're not all tenants.
Well, let's do that, then, I'll have Mr. Marshall drop a letter, and send them a registered letter saying that they must, that they must pay their bills. For.
I, I wouldn't see any reason why we can't handle that the same way that we would handle people who are not taking care of their property. Mickey sends them.
Well, it's a little bit different.
I do understand that, but I don't understand why it can't be, you can't go after.
But you can stay in your house, even though your grass is, it's three foot tall. If you have no water.
Exactly.
According to the building code, I would have to, you know, tell them that it's uninhabitable, basically, I don't want to say condemn the place, but they, they can't live there, so.
But it's different when you own your own property, then we can, and we have gone in to shut the water off.
I agree.
If we have six on this thing, that the person that lives there owns it, we can shut them off, but we don't want to put the village in jeopardy, shut the tenant off.
Right.
That probably got a imp in the house that.
Exactly, exactly, so that's why I'm saying, can we go after the landlord?
Well, what we're doing here, we're going to send letters to all of these fourteen, and then, in their order, yeah, and then we get, if that doesn't get us results, then we can opt to shut water off to the residents.
Well, if they don't pay, it gets attached to their taxes.
Right. I just, I, I wish there was a different way to do it, because you're talking about, I think, something that obviously we're going to have to pay for, as far as registered letters from our attorney, yeah.
Well, let's, I'll.
Can, can we call these folks?
That's, that's what I.
Just make a personal phone call, say, listen, something going on.
I'll do that.
You know, that you're not able to do it.
Some people do call, they'll call and say, look, I got the letter, I'm coming in next week, or whatever, and that's fine, but it's the ones we never really care for.
Right, can we make attempt to contact them with a personal phone call, as opposed to this expense?
If we have a phone number, some don't, you know, we've sent letters, again, they're shut offs.
I think it'd be a lot cheaper to get them to call, it's going to cost us.
Yeah, the letters.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, we'll generate a list, generate the phone numbers, and.
Yeah, and if people are in a financial situation.
I'll phone them up and see about it.
Okay, and we'll probably have to revisit this, the next billing.
Well, next billing will be, well, January, and will be into spring, so maybe it won't be quite so hard.
And then the holiday season will be over, extra expenses to apply.
The thing is, as a resident, your bill goes out on the thirty-first of October, you've got to the thirty-first of November to pay it, then all of a sudden they don't pay it, so you got, you give them another fifteen days, it should be thirty days if you don't have it, off you go.
And it's not really fair to the other people that do pay their bills, really, but, you know, and we don't, everybody gets in line, it's one of those, it seems to be the same ones all the time.
Right, you know, it's just one thing if there's an explanation, or, you know, like you said, they've called in, and you do, you have people that are just.
You, you go through the lessons, it's the same ones.
Leave it.
Well, we'll make one more attempt, we don't have to.
Well, the, I think that at some point you're going to close six, invite another water shut off.
Agreed, okay, we'll do that, okay. All right, the correspondent, please.
Letters, George Rivers, where the Cardi Capiche and Leary Barton, regarding call of course, without officer's salary. Correspondence from Young Summer LLC, regarding the commodification of existing communications tower. Correspondence from Champlain Peterbilt, regarding annual holiday fundraiser. Correspondence from Earth Science Engineering, regarding current status of partially loss ability, and now to chump street. Correspondence from New England Waste Service, regarding increased landfill fees. Correspondence from Comptel Consultants, regarding underpaid franchise fees, cost of joint youth program for two thousand and eleven. Correspondence from Flint County Health Department, regarding Tony Conio's trailer park.
Any discussion on the correspondent?
I have a question on the trailer park thing.
Yes.
Now that he's gone down, and he's not a trailer park anymore, will this work into our codes as to grandfathering and adding back in trailers if he goes over a year without it? Is he going to have to? Is he going to have to jump through hoops with the zoning board?
If he goes longer than a year from where he is now, I'm not sure if trailer parks are allowed there or not. If they're allowed, then he would have to come back to the zoning board and, and get, I'm assuming, special use approval from the zoning board.
Like you said, if they're allowed, he still has to come back?
Unless, well, the, in the zoning book, you have an X and an S. An X is, it's allowed without any review.
Right.
Usually trailer parks are allowed, but after special use approval. You have to go through the zoning board for that.
Because I think it's zoned for that.
Yeah, but it may be by special use approval. I, I mean, I don't have the book in front of me, so I can't tell you off the top of my head. But if it's allowed there, yeah, he would be allowed to, to do it. He may or may not have to come through the zoning board.
I was just curious, because after the, the stuff with Red, you know, I didn't want to run into another situation. He decides to, you know, build it back up, so it's, you know, four years down the road and, okay, just curious.
It seems to be Red, I guess it seems to be a health, a health department issue.
Yeah, it's just for permit.
Yeah.
Well, the health department provides a trailer park as five or more mobile homes on one parcel of land. Um, that's their definition. Our definition here, you know, well, on the zoning book in front of me, I would assume is roughly the same thing.
So there's no change in the meter here? GSA meeting?
No.
Any news on the truck inspection station?
Um, actually, the engineer's coming to the town the, the last week of the month to update the board on what, what's going on. He's been in contact with the, the truck inspection thing. I'm not sure how far along they are in discussion. Um, he is sending a letter to the GSA, Mr. Gothier, again, asking for their cooperation in this, uh, looping the water line through the border project. Uh, we want to give them one last shot at, you know, responding to it one way or another, so we're, we're waiting for that. So hopefully by the end of the month we'll have that information back.
What's happening with the two bridges? Just to-
Two bridges?
Well, and one going towards McDonald's. Is anything moving forward that or ours? I thought ours was supposed to be done this fall. Kind of like fell off the radar.
The one near the long store?
Yeah.
State House and Market.
I was just curious as to where this stood because it was supposed to happen and then nothing and-
Well, the roundabout, that's, that's supposed to be coming two thousand and fourteen.
And you're still stuck in a roundabout?
The last I heard, yeah.
The last I heard, no.
The sheet that was given out to the businesses, uh, I saw today Valeros describing some of this. But it really wasn't, all it was describing is they're going to change their entrance and exits.
Yeah, it, it, it sounds like they're, they're moving everything to the south. Seventy feet on one end or something was the last thing I had.
I see they were doing some course handling there.
Yeah, because they want to, they don't want to impact Valeros as, as much as what they were originally at playing. So if they move it or cock the bridge, I guess, for lack of a better term here, it, it may work better. I, I don't know.
It's a hell of a nap.
Well, without, without the traffic flowing, you know, for why if you don't get the backups, that's an issue. Okay, anything else? New business? Uh, I have a request from legislator McManus. Let the board pass a resolution or a motion requesting the county to address, uh, the issue on the Elm Street Bridge. There is, uh, lead containing paint on the bridge. They have sealed it a number of times, is my understanding. Harry would like a resolution that we are requesting the county to pay attention to that bridge and to update the repair of that bridge. So that he has it and he can go from there with it, to see if he can push this along a little bit. Uh, it's going to be quite, my understanding is it will be quite an extensive endeavor having to put a, a net or whatever underneath all of that bridge. But we have a water line that goes across that bridge.
Water gas.
And gas line that goes-
Sewer gas.
Sewer gas that go across that bridge. So he is requesting that the village board, uh, pass a motion requesting that Camden County, expedite their attention, if I can use that terminology, in, uh, in dealing with this condition of that bridge.
So move that, make a motion that the, the possible county will do this?
Wait a second.
Second motion?
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
So all the lead on this, I mean, all the paint on this bridge is lead?
Well, probably down the first two or three or five layers.
Well, that's a huge danger. You know how many kids hang down that bridge all summer long?
Yeah, and every time the county goes in and seals it, the, the, uh, who's going in and scrape it off? Scrape their initials in it and which just opens up the bag of worms there. It would be, so, okay. All right, we have a series of resolutions. I think you've all been copied with this series of resolutions. Uh, declaring the building unsafe, violation of the village code. Must we read these? In the record?
I would say yes.
Okay. Whereas the property located at ninety-three Church Street, Champlain, New York, with tax back, tax map number eighteen point fifteen dash six dash six is in violation of sixty-nine unsafe building and structures of chapter sixty of the code of the village of Champlain. And the structure upon said premise has collapsed and whereas the owner or persons with interest of record is Jason O'Connell, eight knee Lotus Rue, Plainville, Quebec, Canada, J one C seven B two. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village of Champlain, board of trustees, at the regular meeting held on Monday, December twelfth, two thousand and eleven, hereby approves the commencement and the continuation of the process, including but not limited to the forwarding of the required notice of unsafe building or structure to the required owner or person with interest in all required legal action thereafter regarding the enforcement of the provisions of the village code for this property known as ninety-three Church Street, Champlain, New York. And that said owner be required to comply with the provisions of said village code and to immediately remove said building structure as may be required. And the village attorney is hereby authorized to proceed with all required legal proceedings to enforce compliance with the village code with a motion being made by trustee, seconded by trustee, and carried. Do I have a motion?
Hold on.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, certification, you don't have to read that, do I, buddy?
No.
Okay. Second, number two.
Do a roll call vote on that one.
Oh, sorry. I guess we got a vote on it first. Have a roll call vote.
Aye. Trustee Cusander?
Aye.
Trustee Tronbligh?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett, aye, Garrett Martin?
Aye.
Second resolution, waiver authorization. December twelfth, two thousand and eleven, board meeting. Whereas the property located at ninety-three Church Street, Champlain, New York, with tax map number eighteen point fifteen dash six dash six is in violation of section sixty-nine unsafe building and structures of chapter sixty of the code of the village of Champlain. And the structure upon said premises has collapsed and whereas the owner or person with interest of record is Jason O'Connell, eight knee Lotus Rue, Plainville, Quebec, Canada, J one C seven B two. Now therefore, be it resolved that this resolution authorizes the village of Champlain attorney to issue a waiver to Jason O'Connell, who is the property owner of ninety-three Church Street, Champlain, New York. This will release the liability of time involved and waive the timeframe of all notices and hearing requirements and will allow the village of Champlain to remove the structure that is presently collapsing at ninety-three Church Street. A motion was made by and seconded by, roll call vote as follows. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Tronbligh?
Aye.
Trustee Cusander?
Aye.
Trustee Tronbligh?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Garrett Martin?
Aye.
Third resolution, emergency demolition, December twelfth, two thousand and eleven, board meeting. Whereas the property located at ninety-three Church Street, Champlain, New York, with tax map number eighteen point fifteen dash six dash six is in violation of section sixty-nine unsafe building and structures of chapter sixty of the code of the village of Champlain. And the structure upon said premises has collapsed. And whereas the owner or person with interest of record is Jason O'Connell, eight knee Lotus Rue, Plainville, Quebec, Canada, J one C seven B two. Now therefore, be it resolved, this resolution authorizes the village of Champlain to demolish the structure located at ninety-three Church Street as the structure is in imminent danger of collapsing, which could possibly lead to property damage and harm to the neighboring properties. This will take effect if the property owner, Jason O'Connell, refuses to sign the waiver authorizing the release of the liability of time involved relative to all notices and hearing requirements relative to the removal of this structure. Emergency removal of the structure is pursuant to chapter sixty of the code of the village of Champlain. A motion was made by and seconded by, roll call vote as follows. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Quick, take the roll call vote, please.
Trustee Tronbligh?
Aye.
Trustee Cusander?
Aye.
Trustee Tronbligh?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Garrett Martin?
Aye. This will be handled tomorrow.
We'll start it tomorrow anyway. Anything else to come before the board? Anything I've forgotten? Any other business to come before the board? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead.
Just one thing, we all received a piece of paper on the, um, the youth bureau, it, it had everyone's social security numbers on it. They should never have been copied to us. Make sure that gets shredded. Just so you all are aware, that had everyone's personal social security numbers on it.
Okay. That's first one, it's number seven. That's, uh, do we have that in page, please, Paul, that? We will copy the, the front page for you again, but do we have the whole package, actually?
Yeah.
First one is number seven. Thank you, Amy.
Yep.
We know that.
Right here. Uh, we had a, uh, motion and a second.
Aye.
We also gave, I think you did.
Oh, and I said, oh, by the way.
Agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.